So much more, yeah, that one is very cool.
Don't worry about it.
Enjoy that one.
... which is actually all of you tonight. Seven of you are brand new, decided to have you. My name is Drew Willison, I'm the very new city clerk. I'm part of the council, most importantly for you all. This is my deputy, Cassidy Flynn. We've got members of the public here. The meeting is being live broadcast. And I think we're, I think we actually have twenty-four. So I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. So with that, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and I need to take attendance. Anybody mind if I sit down? I'm actually falling out of it. I also wasn't feeling quite that official. So, councillor Albright.
Here.
Councillor Baker.
Here.
You said it. Councillor Bixby.
Yeah.
I should be saying councillor-elect, so forgive me. Councillor-elect Block.
Here.
Councillor-elect Charm.
Here.
Councillor-elect Dama-Bah. Okay? You just told me, I got it out there eventually. Councillor-elect Farrell.
Here.
Councillor-elect Guess.
Here.
Councillor-elect Golden.
Here.
Councillor-elect Gordon.
Here.
Councillor-elect Grindberg.
Yeah.
Councillor-elect Grossman.
Here.
Councillor-elect Irish.
Yeah.
Councillor-elect Kaelis.
Here.
Councillor-elect Kelly.
Here.
Councillor-elect Prinsman.
Present.
Councillor-elect Larry.
Also present.
Councillor-elect Lucas.
Present and accounted for.
Councillor-elect Malachi.
Here.
Councillor-elect.
Here.
Councillor-elect. Here. Councillor-elect Silver.
Here.
Councillor-elect Wright.
Here.
Perfect. Twenty-four councillors-elect present. A little bit of, little bit of bookkeeping before we really get started. And I get to give up this gavel, thank God. We have snacks up here, most importantly, snack closet on, on the other side of the chamber is open. For those of you who are new, if we take a recess, I'll, I'm happy to show you where it is. For those of you who are brand new or would like a refresher, we're gonna hold at least a first round of new councillor training on Monday the fifteenth at five o'clock. Realize that's a little bit early, but it's before the council meeting, most of you can attending meetings. If you all cannot make it that night, or if some of you can't, we're glad we repeated. This will be a little bit of an ongoing thing. We're gonna start with mainly council-related things and things related to budget, code of ethics and things like that. But we'll also set up meetings for you with any of the city departments that you want to get familiar with, with some of the things that go on around here. With that, we move on to the selection of the temporary presiding officer. It is traditionally the longest-serving councillor that is currently serving, and that is councillor Baker. At this point, I'll accept a motion and a second to appoint the temporary presiding officer. Second, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor of the appointment of the temporary presiding officer, please say aye.
Aye.
Noes?
Say no.
That, I surrender the gavel. Thank you. Honorable forward.
Thank you, colleagues. It's a real honor. This is, for those of you who are new to this process, this is my. Purpose, but it doesn't mean I remember everything. So all of you have license to poke me or wave or otherwise tell me that I've missed a step here. So the first order of business is to adopt the rules of the caucus. The caucus, we are all, for members of the public who are here, while there are members of the current city council present, and there are people who have been elected to the city council, we are all essentially the same as councillors-elect. We're, we're still civilians in a sense, but under the curious process, we are governed by the open meeting law for purposes of our vote and our process. And the first order of business is to adopt the caucus rules, which involve these, how we select the president, vice president and president emeritus. And I'd accept a motion to accept those rules. You all have seen them, if anybody needs to copy, I think the clerk has them handy. Second, any discussion? If not, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Noes? Guys have it, good. So I'm going to just, before we get to the nomination, I just. Seen that questions about. Questions he and I conferred with the law department. But he sent an email out that I hope all of you saw, clarifying that as part of this process, the reason we have this process is to get to thirteen affirmative votes for each officer. You will see that this process involves somewhat an unusual situation. Right now, we're in a committee of a caucus, but when we go into the full council meeting, we will be duly sworn by the mayor and then take the oath and sit down. And then we immediately go into a committee of the whole to conduct the elections. And we do not report out the results of the elections if and until someone has thirteen votes. Many moons ago, there were a couple of people who ran for council and both had twelve votes in the caucus. They had twelve votes on inauguration day, they had twelve votes three months later. And that seemed to be somewhat inefficient. So this rule was adopted in order to try and remedy that difficulty. So if someone doesn't get to thirteen votes at the first try, then those candidates who were part of that process, who were that succeeded, recede, and then other candidates could be nominated, and then you go around and around until you get to an end. And you do that for each successive office. So any questions about that process?
We'll be taking a break between votes.
You can, under the new rules, you can ask for such a break. We have brought provisions and fluids in the meantime, so, but certainly anyone can ask for a break. The law department cautions that, again, we are operating under open meetings, so in purposes of making sure that it's not a quorum convening anywhere, I'm gonna stay put unless I actually have to leave. But also, we want to avoid serial conversations in the sense that might violate the spirit of the open meeting law in its actual form. But yes, that's, you asked for a short answer and I gave you a long one, my apologies. All right. So, any other questions about our process? Okay, at this point, we proceed to the selection of a president, and I would ask for nominations for president of the council. And then what we traditionally do is when the nominations are completed, we close the nominations and then we invite each candidate to come and make a statement. I will say historically, brevity and effectiveness have been coincident in those statements, but they don't have to be. Any questions about the process? All right, I'm now, yes.
Besides the nominators and the candidates, is there opportunity for discussion?
Yes. So at this point, I would entertain anyone who has a nomination to make.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a nomination?
Yes, councillor-elect Lucas is recognized.
Thank you. So I rise to make a nomination because it has become apparent over the last few hours that I do not have the necessary votes to become the next council president. I do hope the next council president can lead this esteemed body of twenty-four members, be a role model and a pillar in the community, and effectively run our meetings in a more efficient way. I rise because I don't have the votes to become president. And I do hope the next president can adopt some of the things that I would like to see happen, other than the things that I had previously mentioned. Updating our city charter to give us more power and influence on the budget. I know that's something that councillor Farrell has mentioned to me on a number of occasions. I would like to see more proclamations from councillors to Newton residents and the business community for their outstanding achievements. I would like the, call it the more experienced councillors to act as a role model for the newer councillors, and we have seven this term. Another big challenge for this next president. Heard from the vote. Was he asking a split vote? But we definitely need to improve this. And lastly, I hope the next city council president invites our leaders from the state house, the state house. Delegation, thank you. And invite councillors Shorts, Sangiello, Lawn and Senator Cream to the city council chamber where we can get updates from them. I hope the next city council president will do these things. And that is why I nominate my friend and colleague from Ward One, John Oliver.
Thank you. Are there any other nominees? Yeah.
If I stand to my speech, I think. Councillor Baker, do you need a second?
Oh yes, we need a second, thank you for reminding me. See, I told you right at the beginning of that question. Okay, second, okay. You might be representing for those which are.
Thank you. I didn't lose it in the talk round. I would like to nominate David Kaelis for president. I don't have a speech about what I want him to do. I just wanna talk about why I think David would be a really good president. We've already seen his experience as vice president. We've seen how he gets in the middle of and bridges the divide. Sometimes that exists amongst the councillors from one side to another. He knows what the city's about. I have faith that he would help create fair and balanced committees and spread us all out by Warren and committees that work best for us, and I have faith that he would do that. And I hope he will consider voting for him president.
Second nomination?
Do you have a second? Thank you very much.
I'd like the second nomination, councillor Kaelis. I've served on several, two committees with him for several years. And I have physically seen him bridge the gap between the various points of view on the council. I think he would do a good job to bring us together.
Okay, thank you very much. This is, this is probably the explanation. Anybody else? You know, Woody Allen once said, man fights for food, but there must also be a beverage. And now, I think the tradition is to allow a statement from each of the nominees. I wanna see if there are any.
Close.
We have to, I move to close nomination.
Move to close nomination, there are seconds.
Second.
All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Noes? Guys have it. So at this point, nomination being closed, we can traditionally entertain a statement from each candidate if they wish to make one in the order of nomination. So you've been first nominated.
So I will be as brief as I possibly can, just. But I do have a few words. First off, thank you for the nomination. I do see the role of the council president as simultaneously simple and complex. Simple in the sense that ultimately I see that there are two things that personally I would like to see us accomplish together. And I would undertake these two things as the, as my agenda, if you will. Should I be so lucky as to be voted in? So the simple part, I think, of the role is that over the past couple of terms, I have seen this council build stronger relationships across our community. And I don't just mean within this room or within this building. Certainly, we need strong relationships with our clerk's office. We need a strong relationship with school committee, mayor's office. If I haven't said the clerk's office, I'm gonna say it again. And certainly, above all, residents in all of the groups that form across the entire city. As we all know, there are a lot of special interest groups here. I'm including all of them. I wanna make sure that we are including not only special interest groups, PTOs, but everyone else that I have mentioned. Because the complex part, the job, I think, is in this room. There are twenty-four of us. We all have somewhat strong opinions, I'm gonna guess. There are seven new opinions I'm looking forward to working with and understanding. We also have roughly eighty-eight thousand residents who expect a lot from us. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to figure out how to work together in a way that gets that done efficiently. As councillor Lucas just mentioned, effectively. But my goal is to be able to do what I can from the podium to get that done. I think that's, you know, the sum total of what I really want to talk about, but the complex part here is we're gonna have to learn how to compromise and collaborate in ways that we, we have been, and we need to continue to do it on a higher level. Collective opinions are, it's okay if we debate those amongst ourselves, but at the end of the day, we have to be focused on helping each other get to a resolution, and, and I'd like to facilitate that best I can. Right? I, I think that we not only owe that to each other, but I know that we owe it to the residents who elected all of us. So from that perspective, I don't think anybody else would be here if we didn't see huge potential and headroom for this city. I'd like to work together to, to achieve it. With that said, I'd be honored. Thank you.
Thank you. You hear that from councillor elect here?
Thank you for the nomination, I really appreciate it. So colleagues, I'm honored and humbled to be nominated for president. If elected, I will work closely with whomever you choose as vice president so that together, we can serve this council as an effective and unified team. This is a moment where I think we need a president with varied experience on the council. Professional experience managing people, budgets and complex initiatives, and a leadership style grounded in listening, respect and collaboration. And I bring that experience. As former vice chair of both finance and public facilities, I learned what it means to lead a committee, preparing for docket items, navigating unexpected challenges and helping colleagues work towards thoughtful outcomes. As a two-time vice president, interview and select two city clerks, fill vacancies on boards and commissions. These experiences have given me a clear understanding of the demands of the presidency and have prepared me well to take them on. Professionally, I've managed staff and multimillion dollar budgets in large organizations. That background gives me a strong foundation from which to partner effectively, not only with Drew Willison and the clerk's office, but also with other departments. When I think about the presidency, I think about three core responsibilities. First, it's making sure we run a smooth operation on the council. Making sure every council member feels heard, established processes are adhered to, and every councillor is treated with respect. This includes an active partnership with the clerk's office. And while the office is in excellent hands, the president plays an important role, and I intend to remain closely engaged to anticipate challenges and help to manage. Second, the president must build strong collaborative relationships with the school committee and the administration. I've done this as an existing vice president. And between regular one-on-ones with the mayor and other meetings to ensure we're in communication, I know that we cannot act in silos. We need alignment, communication and clarity about shared priorities. Third, the president represents this body at public events. Showing up, as our former president always said, is important. And I know the community likes to see engagement and respect for their local concerns. I'll take that with the vice president very seriously. If elected, my guiding principles will be respect, collaboration and a commitment to strong transparent processes. We made progress this term in how we treat one another, but we can do more. Remember, we agree on far more than. And we need to build on that, acknowledge that, and then foster active listening, trust in a culture where vigorous debate is welcome and compromise encouraged. I strongly believe that allowing space for disagreement is healthy and understanding perspectives often can lead to constructive incorporation of overlooked views. Working with the vice president, committee assignments will be based on who is best positioned to lead. We'll ensure the committees include a diversity of viewpoints, so the recommendations are balanced. Finally, we have faced processes, process challenges this term. Times when the community felt left out and where their input wasn't fully incorporated. Our constituents are our primary stakeholders and we owe them clarity, transparency and trust. I wanna work with the mayor's office to improve our processes so that residents feel heard and confident in our work. I'm running for president because I feel I have the experience, the temperament and the instinct to lead collaboratively and independently. Thank you for considering me, and I ask you for your vote.
Question with anyone who wished to be heard in discussion before we take a vote?
So, having paid attention to politics in the city for a while, I recognize it's very difficult to divine the will of the voters or the purpose of the voters, and the reason why they may have elected any one of us. But occasionally, that's not true, and occasionally it is clear. And it was clear this year when the third candidate in the Ward Four at Large race after they learned of statements he made that expressed what's largely viewed as intolerance of trans children and that body.
Enough, I'll see you later.
Wait, you got a vote?
You got a vote, Mandy.
I'll be back for a vote. I'll be back for a vote. I'm just not gonna listen to this.
And voters were very clear, I think, that, that was the factor in the race. And I think that we need to listen to what the voters have said, and I think it would be a mistake to elevate to the presidency one of that candidate's earliest and strongest defenders. And for that reason, I urge us not to support that candidate, instead to support David. I recognize that this is not a typical statement and that I've taken a bit of a risk here, but I think that it is an important message that we need to send to the voters and particularly the vulnerable voters, the trans kids and their families who were really rocked by what happened this year. Thank you.
I therefore say I am stunningly disappointed with the statement that I just heard. I do not believe that this was an issue that was understood clearly by the voters. It was not expressed through person about whom you were speaking. Anyone else wish to be heard?
I just wanna say that one of the, one of the reasons, the reasons that I would vote for a president is to bring us together and to find areas of where we can agree. I think as a, as a group together, we're, we have more value to the residents of Newton when we can work, work comprehensively and understand that we're gonna have our differences, but we need to focus on what we can do together. And that's what I'm hoping the next president will do. And I'm keeping that foremost in my mind, whoever the next president is. And I would like to see us be able to rise above, you know, our differences and focus on what we can do together.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
I'd just like to add, since it seems that councillor Oliver was being criticized for who he supported, I also supported the candidate you're referring to, and I don't regret it. I think he would have been a great city. And I don't regret it. I think he would have been a great city councillor and I think what happened to him was absolutely, um, that was going and, um. I've been told that that that's going to dog him for the rest of his life. Certainly that Boston Globe article that was. Pulling the Boston Globe into it after he'd apologized and. It was, it was the kind of behavior I thought we left behind a couple of years ago and I was. Some people may not remember, but on a much smaller scale, I was accused of being anti-LGBTQ and misquoted in that effort. And I thought we were done with that kind of thing and. It's the kind of thing that makes good people not want to run for. Run. That's the kind of thing that. You you say one thing and to me it was a dumb dad comment and. He learned, he apologized and yes, it was his campaign. I I called it strategically timed faux outrage. Uh, right before that was for going out and early voting and. I just want to express my disgust for that. Campaign against him.
Uh, thank you. I think we're dangerously close to making this caucus about something other than what it's supposed to be about. Which is who is best positioned to lead our council forward. And many of you know, I ran for this position pretty hard the last time around and. Sort of found myself back in the mix to some degree this time around. And and I have thought long and hard about these experiences. And I think that what both of our candidates really tried to express, and I really do agree with, is that there is a lot more than. That unites the people in this room and the people in the city that divides us. And I know that was stated and I want to lift it up. What we have to decide now is how are we going to move forward? How are we going to work together? How are we going to heal wounds? I've had brutal campaigns. It's tough to move past them and move on. It really is. And some of those wounds never leave you. But this is about the city. It's about. Being adults who work together to solve problems. And we have two really great candidates here, two people who love. And both have. Experience. Now, it won't surprise many. David Kalas. Some of you who have worked with us over time know that David and I were chairing Vice Sheriff Finance together for four years. We've worked together in many other circumstances. And one of the things that I love the most about David is that he wrestles with his decisions. So do I. I did not come into politics with a clear ideological view about any of the major issues that. Tend to or that I have seen divide the city over the last eight years that I've been doing this and. I try each time to listen to everybody, think about how that's going to inform my opinion and vote for my heart. And David does that also, and I think that's why we've developed such. Um, a collaborative and respectful relationship over time. And I think that his ability to represent the council, particularly when we have a new mayor. And and we are going to need someone who is going to really represent the council's views. I think he's in an excellent position to be that counterpoint. I think he's in an excellent position to support our new clerk. And those of us who have been around have certainly seen, we've had a lot of turnover in our clerk's office over time. We have a wonderful deputy in Cassidy to continue to work with and develop. But we need that professional leadership and steady hand, and that is what this is about. And I really don't want tonight's vote to suddenly turn into. A reflection on something that it's not supposed to be about. And I do also want to say a kind word about John as well. Because despite the fact that I just. I think John knows, and we've also had a really warm, respectful working relationship and have disagreed on many. Working relationship and have found. As revolving accounts. Right motion to cut um, across every department to the school, which is this year. Um, you know, sometimes you find yourself in strange situations. So all I want to say is I genuinely believe however this turns out, we're going to be fine. But I would really love to see an end to aisles. We're not Washington DC. Please let's not be that and um, that's what I wanted to say.
Let me recognize first Counselor-elect Albright.
So I I wanted to, in sort of a similar vein to what Counselor Grossman just talked about. I want to reflect on the last thing that I did when I was the president back a couple of years ago. You know, that was the time when the MBTA Communities Act was, the zoning for that was really hot and heavy in this city. And um, we had one side of the, of the council that wanted to, you know, go as far as we possibly could, get as many units as we possibly could. And we had another side that was saying, oh my God, that's 10,000 units. There's too many units, blah, blah, blah. So we had, we were divided on that. And um, Counselor Gentile and I, who are often on way opposite sides of the fence. And I was the president and he was the spokesman for the other side. We found a way. I, I as the president and him as the spokesman for the other side, we found a way to find our way through that negotiation and get. Or we're going to sue you, or they're going to sue us or something. Um, so I I'm going to say something first about Counselor Kalas is that. But you know, last night is a perfect example of it. We were on opposite sides of at least one of the issues, the two controversial issues. And not really close on the other. And you, and I, I, you know, that's fine. That brings us together. You vote your conscience. You, you get, we get it, we get there. We need someone who's willing to see both sides, but get us together and get us to an end. I I've worked with um, Counselor, um, the revolving, the revolving fund thing. The three of us have worked together.
And going to continue to.
And we're going to, we're going to work on it, trying to get the revolving fund thing is settled. So I I've seen both, both of these candidates work together across the aisle, trying to get things done. Um, you know, I'm going to vote for Counselor Kalas as well, but it's really, really important for us to find the place where we can work together. Um, and that's what the people in New England want us to do. So I'm just hoping that whatever we do, that's what we end up with, the place where we can work together.
Well, I'd like to speak up because I think um, my race has been invoked and referenced in this conversation. But perhaps more importantly, because as far as I know, I'm the only member of the queer community that is in this body of counselors elect. And it is true from my experience that there is pain in that community. From the last few months, but also pain that's, that is seeping. The level, there are families that are scared, that are hurting. There are families that are considering leaving their homes, moving across the world, leaving this country. I heard both of the candidates tonight speak about bringing community together and including community. And that is so admirable and it is exactly what I think that we need at this time. I believe that the way that we're going to do that. I saw that displayed in my interactions with the council in the last few months. In the ways that Counselor-elect Mickley, uh, Counselor-elect Kalas, um, interacted with me and with others. Um, and that spirit of inclusion, that spirit of, of equity, I've said it, I've said it throughout my campaign. Is not about what you do, the way that you step aside to let good things happen, but it's about the work that you do to effectuate equity and justice for all. So I hope that exactly in the spirit that we've all been speaking of. We will prioritize bringing our community together. Bringing um, bringing into City Hall and into the work that we do, the voices that are not always heard, that often. Feel left out or that are perhaps scared to come into the space and be heard. And I believe that exactly as everybody has said, we have this great opportunity ahead of us to be collaborators and to work together meaningfully. Um, for those reasons, I intend to vote for Counselor-elect Kalas. But however you are planning to vote, I hope that you will keep those goals in mind, that we have to bring everybody in. Um, and work, work collaboratively together from our committees to the whole council, to the whole city and beyond. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Uh, Counselors-elect, you know, the other night. Speak to the way that we conduct ourselves. I think it's in the spirit we should undertake this vote. Um, and I'm now going to call for, uh, a call a roll unless there's anyone else who wishes to be heard. And you, at the point, we'll do this alphabetically. Uh, and if you would announce the name of the candidate that you support, we have two candidates again for everyone's information. Uh, Counselor-elect Oliver and Counselor-elect Kalas. So if you want, Counselor-elect Oliver, may you say his name and you want Counselor-elect Kalas, you say his name. Okay, everybody prepared? Oliver. And it'd be helpful, Republic, if you just called the last name. You said Oliver, yes? Yes, Oliver. And then I call the next one.
Counselor Block, Oliver.
Counselor Charm.
Kalas.
Counselor-elect Damabah.
Kalas.
Counselor-elect Farrell.
With great respect for the institution in which we will all serve. And appreciation for his leadership and equanimity, I vote for John Oliver.
Counselor-elect Deetz.
Oliver.
Counselor-elect Golden.
John Oliver.
Counselor-elect Gordon. Counselor-elect Greenberg. Counselor-elect Grossman.
Kalas.
Counselor-elect Irish. Counselor-elect Kalas.
Kalas.
Counselor-elect Kelly.
Kalas.
Counselor-elect Princeton.
Kalas.
Counselor-elect Leary.
Kalas.
Counselor-elect Lucas.
Oliver.
Counselor-elect Malachy.
Oliver.
Counselor-elect Nickley.
Oliver.
Counselor-elect Oliver. Uh, I'll go with Oliver. Counselor-elect Roach. David Kalas. Counselor-elect Silver. Oliver. Counselor-elect Wright.
Oliver.
So the clerk's tally is that Counselor-elect Oliver has 13 votes and Counselor-elect Kalas has 11 votes. And under our rules, uh, Counselor-elect Oliver is chosen by the caucus as the president-elect. So, um, the provision is that I, as deciding officer, can give you a little while longer if you're willing. Um, and that is to facilitate the selection of a vice president. We follow the same process, the same opportunity for comment after nominations are made. But at this point, uh, unless anyone has any questions, I entertain a motion. Excuse you, I entertain a, uh, any nominations for a vice president. Uh, Counselor President, I saw your name for.
Yes, in the spirit of the founding of our country and the way things work, I think the second slate finisher for president would make a great vice president. I would nominate Counselor Kalas for all the reasons he articulated.
Second, there's a second. Uh, any, uh, okay, I think we have a second. And any other nominations? Uh, Counselor Farrell.
Is it possible to move for acclamation?
Not yet. You have to close the nomination.
Yeah, I closed the nomination.
Well, most of us may need to close in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, the nominations are closed. Now you may make a move.
I'd like to make a motion that we agree by acclamation that David Kalas should be our next vice president. Thank you, David.
There is a second.
Second.
All those in favor will say aye. Okay, I don't think you need to, but that's a roll. Um, now, the next to vote is to select a president emeritus, and since I have modest history in that role. I'm going to ask if the president-elect designate would be willing to chair the meeting in my stead. Would that be agreeable to the caucus?
Yes.
Yes, tradition, so I'm going to hand over the job to you.
Hopefully the, uh, in.
Well, it says Lyle's supposed to read this part. Uh, so, uh, the simplest way that I can read this without reading every word. Uh, is, uh, we're at a point now where we need to open, uh, the nominations for the president emeritus. Uh, do I need to get a motion to do so? No, you, you, right, that's direct. So I'm going to open, uh, nominations for president emeritus. Uh, I saw Counselor, uh, Albright's in first.
Okay, I nominate Counselor-elect Baker.
Second.
You have a second? So fantastic. Are there any other nominations?
Move to close nominations.
Seeing none. Uh, I will accept the nomination to, uh, or that motion to close nominations. And I see one hand. We have a comment or a second?
Second.
Second, thank you.
I'm going to get to my other part.
You can get to the other part.
I would like to move that we accept this nomination by acclamation, if that's appropriate.
I believe that is completely in order. Is there any comments on that motion? All right, uh, then I think what we. I need a second. I have a second. Fantastic. Thank you. Second, great. You can see I'm going to need a few minutes to figure all this out. Uh, so with that said, uh, all those in favor of that acclamation in support of president emeritus becoming. Counselor Baker, Counselor-elect Baker, please say aye. Any opposed? My team, that, thank, thank you very much. I don't think we need to go to the roll call for that one either. Um.
It was not, there's a guy.
I just want to say thank you and that rather than dissuade you from what you just.
Uh, and I think really, uh, the last. Do I do this or do you?
No, no, you do.
And I have no idea what we need to do. Ah, I need a motion to adjourn. Fantastic. Do I have a second?
Second, sir.
Fantastic. I believe. We're adjourned.
Aye. Aye.